I'm going to call this special session of the Planning Commission to order. Going to establish that we have a quorum. We do not have anything on the consent agenda. So, we're going to roll into the regular agenda. I know that most of you are here to do, to voice your input on sidewalks. We have one subdivision plat, it looks like, ahead of that discussion. So, I'm going to proceed with that. Subdivision plats, the Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Item A, Campus Subdivision, Section 1. A final plat of campus subdivision. Section 1 being 1.089 acres northwest of Coliseum Drive and East 40th Street and variances from Chapter 10, 3A2 of the subdivision ordinance to maintain a 48-foot paving width for Coliseum Drive and an urban collector street and to maintain a 24-foot paving width without curb and gutter for East 40th Street and urban local street.
Okay. Zach Rainbow, Planning Development Services. As you said, this is a subdivision plat for the campus addition, Section 1. It received a requested 30-day waiver last meeting. Northwest at the intersection of East 40th Street and Coliseum. Picture of the plat. Light photos. The one to the left is East 40th. One to the right is Coliseum Drive. They were reviewed pursuant to the allowed variances and the conditions listed in your staff report. As read in the legal description, they're requesting variances to boast East 40th Street and, excuse me, Coliseum Drive. Both the plat and the variance request for East 40th Street, excuse me, conform to the policies in the neighborhood, LDSO. Coliseum Drive functions adequately. East 40th Street does not. Staff believes there are significant drainage issues in this area. Staff recommends approval of both Coliseum Drive and the plat and denial of the East 48th Street variance. Happy to answer any questions.
You roll back one slide, please, Zach. Says that there are seven conditions of approval. Can you outline those for us, please?
Public improvement. Public improvements for the streets, drainage plan, financial guarantees, and a tax certificate, unless variances are approved today.
Okay. And the denial of the variance for East 40th Street. Could you provide an explanation of why the city don't feel like granting that variance?
Yes. Engineering is here to speak more technically to the issues, but there are significant drainage issues and they feel that the curb and gutter and the drainage, the width, would provide a better flow of the drainage channel.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions for the staff?
Would you please go back to the picture of the...
There is, the one on the left is East 40th.
Okay.
And then this is Coliseum Drive in the intersection of East 40th Street on the right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right. If the city engineers are here and available, I would welcome their input, please.
Good morning. Mitchell Gatlin, Engineering Services. Wanted to just quickly discuss the 40th Street variance request. So, on East 40th Street, if you're familiar with this area, every time it rains, it turns into a river. You know, that can be said about a lot of streets around here, but this one, being the issue at hand. You can see on this, on the left picture here, 40th Street has no curb and gutter currently. You can actually see the pavement condition as well. Basically, what happens is water just comes around, wraps around from Coliseum Drive, and then just sits there. We believe as engineers, as engineering, that if you were to install curb and gutter along that stretch, it's going to help direct that water, help get it out, and not just sit there and pond and soak into the pavement surface. And then also, we do have some known drainage complaints in this area where it is getting a, it is encroaching upon private property. On this right picture here, you can actually see Coliseum Drive, the radius for that curb wraps around, so basically just taking that and continuing it is kind of the intent.
So, if you do the curb and gutter there, that's only going to push the water to your neighbor. It's not going to really solve any issues, will it?
Well, so, the property, the property on the north side of East 40th right now is all unplatted property. So, if there were to be any development along those properties, then basically we'd be having the same conversation that we're having on this case. So, this is kind of the first case where you're starting that, where you're starting that curb line. You know, the water right now already sits there and is already a problem in that area.
What direction is the water flowing?
It should be flowing to the west, towards North Chadburn Street. It's trying to make its way towards North Chadburn Street.
So, it's coming south down Coliseum and turning on 40th and going west?
Correct.
So, the variance that's requested is for, I believe, road width as well. Is the staff, or are you recommending curb and gutter only, or to widen the road and put in curb and gutter?
With the widening, I mean, being the standard width, that would be something we would like, but you know, if we could come to a compromise and just have the curb and gutter, I think at this point, staff would be willing to make that compromise.
Okay.
Does the city have plans in the future to curb and gutter the rest of the street?
Like I said, it's undeveloped, so if it were ever to develop, but if it ever did become an issue, we could definitely look into that project.
Houses and cars that I can see in the picture on the left.
It's all surveyed land, so if any improvements were to happen, they would actually have to come in for a subdivision plat. There's one house along there, and then I think there's the memorial business, and then I think there's an entrance to a, to a pit.
Memorial, that's on 40th, on Coliseum, but on 40th is where I'm asking.
40th and North Chadburn is the memorial business.
Mitchell, I think if you go back a couple of slides, there, I think we have an aerial...
Anyone else have questions for the staff? Thank you, Mitchell. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good morning. Russell Gully with SKHE Engineering, Single Member District 2 for this one. We would ask your approval of both variances as requested. We understand there are drainage issues in this area. By adding a small segment of curb and gutter along 40th Street, we're not, we're not going to solve the drainage problem out there. This area is flat, and for the drainage to continue moving west as it's supposed to, we may get it across our property maybe a little bit more efficiently. We're just going to get it to the next people and then it's going to kind of bottleneck on them. The proposal of this is to add some lots, if you will, that are going to front Coliseum. There's an existing residence that fronts 40th Street that's going to stay there, but they're going to create some additional residential lots behind this, and they're going to front Coliseum. So, as part of this, we're going to have an obligation to review and look at, there'll be potentially an increase in stormwater runoff from this, by the development of this land, from the undeveloped area to now a single-family residential in there. So, yes, we will create potentially some additional runoff, so we're going to have to work with engineering and the developer to find ways to mitigate that drainage and runoff from our property, from our developed area. But we're struggling with, and for this to be economical for the developer, if they're going to have to find ways to deal with drainage internally to theirs, for them to try to now improve, if you will, 40th Street, kind of on a, on kind of an area that's already developed, they're not adding or increasing traffic or anything in there. So, we just kind of ask your approval of both variances as requested, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Russell, they're going, it looks like the plat that's been submitted shows five lots. There's one currently.
Yes.
So, there'd be four more that front on Coliseum.
Well, currently, it's just, it's surveying abstract, so it's really never been platted, but it is, that residence is, and that property is one large lot. And so, yes, there, there's one currently, and then there'll be five, so we're adding four. Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Gully?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? If so, please come forward. State your name.
Rocky Templin. I did have a question concerning the past on Chapter 9, 5 on sidewalks. It's been the planning's direction that minor collector streets require sidewalks. I was curious why on this plat that the Planning Commission, or the plantings, were not asking for a sidewalk on Coliseum, which according to 9, 5, reasons for may be required heavy pedestrian vehicular traffic, which we all know Coliseum is very busy. And so, that's my question.
It's a great question. Thank you.
As you know, it's at your discretion, so you can always add that as a condition if you choose to. We have typically, while, while they're correct, we have often recommended sidewalks on collector streets in mostly already developed areas, however, we typically have not. There have been some situations where we have near schools and that sort of thing, but in a largely built-out area, and as you'll see with the next item on the sidewalk ordinance, in largely already built-out areas, that is an exemption that, that we would propose in the new ordinance, but that we have also made in our recommendations in the past. So, this is a, one of those gray areas where it could go either way. Again, if that's your inclination, that's an option for you to recommend to add a condition for a sidewalk, but in this particular case, staff did not recommend that.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment. Anyone wish to share their opinion or make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Make a motion to approve the campus subdivision, approve the variance for 48th Street, and approve the variance for 40th Street.
You said 48th. I think you meant Coliseum for that first variance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I do. Thank you. I was reading 48-foot, and I put a street behind it. So, Coliseum and 40th.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the plat with variances for Coliseum and 40th Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. So, that's 6-1. Text amendment. City Council has final authority for approval of text amendments. Public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the City Code of Ordinances, Exhibit C, Land Development and Subdivision Ordinance, amending Chapter 9, Section 5 sidewalks, creating new requirements and regulations regarding sidewalks. Mr. James.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. So, I want to start out, and I'm going to briefly go through some of the background of why we're here today and why the staff is recommending what we're recommending, and then I'll get into the specifics on the ordinance. And I'll talk about a couple of issues when we get there is, I'll very briefly go through items in the ordinance where we've not gotten any concerns raised. So, if you have questions about those, again, we can open that up, but I'm going to spend most of my time on the areas where there hasn't been consensus throughout the process, because at the end of the day, we're going to ask you all for direction on how to, you know, which options to choose as we go through each of those. First, I wanted to start with the city's comprehensive plan that was adopted back in the past. It does make a number of recommendations, including improving the pedestrian and bicycle system, including enhanced sidewalk network, exploring ways to make pedestrian travel safer, and specifically mentions revising the development standards to require sidewalks on both sides of the street of collector and arterial streets, and at least one side of the street for local streets. The city's parks plan also makes a reference to sidewalks and encourages sidewalk connections in areas to help increase connectivity to parks. Had a San Angelo housing study done back in 2019. It specifically mentioned sidewalks as well. It noted that some of the home builders they met with did indicate that there was a preference for not having sidewalks in neighborhoods, but the consultant found no other evidence of that other than the home builders, and their surveys actually showed that many of their respondents did prefer more walkable communities. Also noted the economic and health benefits of providing sidewalks. And back in 2013, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the regional planning organization for our, our area, the city as well as the surrounding area, they worked with ASU to do a survey. It was a statistically significant survey, and otherwise, that means that it followed standard surveying practices. It found, I won't read through all of these, but the, the gist of what they found was that people were supportive of more pedestrian infrastructure, and they did find that the, there was not a positive view of the city's performance in that regard over the past years, and they wanted to see more done to address sidewalks. Eighty-seven percent specifically said they would support capital funding for sidewalks, and then 86% supported establishing sidewalk standards for developments. Now, I'll note that those were very general questions, so that, it doesn't get into some of the specifics that we'll talk about, but I think this just indicates that there is a desire for more sidewalks. But I'll also note that there is agreement among everyone. You'll hear some, some folks today that are opposed to some pieces of this, but I don't want to gloss over the fact that we all agree on probably 80% or more of what's in, in that draft ordinance. So, another survey that the NPO did in 2016, again, just showed generally lots of support in the community for more sidewalks. They asked specifically, where would you like to see more sidewalks? The top responses included those there, including everywhere and in neighborhood and residential areas. So, one of the points that we'll be discussing is whether to require sidewalks just on major streets, but not in new neighborhoods, or whether to require it on most streets, including in new neighborhoods. The AARP did a survey a couple of years ago and found that eight in 10 Americans prefer communities that offer sidewalks and walkability. They found that people who live in neighborhoods with sidewalks are 47% more likely to be active. They also found that when two houses are identical, the presence of sidewalks has an increased value. They sell for more. And then, safe, accessible, maintained sidewalks are a community investment that enhances health and social capital. Couple of other notes. National Association of Realtors did a survey in 2013, and it also found a higher preference for walkable communities, particularly among younger folks. And then, we talked to SAISD, and they indicated that it varies by school, but at schools, particularly elementary schools, anywhere between 10 and 35% of kids walk to school. And so, we also looked at other cities. Of the 50 largest cities in Texas, only two don't require sidewalks in new development, and that would be San Angelo and Waco. All other 48 cities that we looked at required sidewalks, including within new residential development. Now, I don't want to gloss over this, but I, I don't say this to say because everybody else does it, we have to do it. I realize we're unique and we'll make our own decision, but I also want to point this out because I, I think some of the folks we've heard from try to give the impression that this is some sort of crazy utopian idea that is just out in left field. And so, I don't want you to go into this thinking that, because we are unique in not requiring sidewalks in most new development. A couple of cities of note, Abilene adopted a sidewalk ordinance in 2007. They were one of the latest ones to do so. The latest one is Longview. Actually, we started this process a couple of years ago, and when we did that, Longview was on that list of, of top 50 cities that didn't require sidewalks, but they adopted their ordinance just last year. So, all of these ordinances we looked at have exceptions. So, generally, the rule is you, you build a sidewalk unless you meet an exception, and these are the most common ones, and we've included these in our draft ordinance. Rural development areas, industrial areas, and existing neighborhoods, sort of like we just talked about on the previous plat. If you're in an existing developed area, this sidewalk, this sidewalk ordinance wouldn't require that you build sidewalks. Only in new developed areas would be, that would be applicable to. Now, that doesn't apply, I'll note, for like redevelopment on a commercial site on a major street, that would still require a sidewalk. But in residential areas, if, if their home's already built in the area, then sidewalks wouldn't be triggered under this ordinance. So, the uncommon exception, this is the exception that Home Builders Association is asking us to look at, is new residential neighborhoods. So, this is a different survey, but was done a few years ago, of 47 cities, large and small, and only three of those cities did not require sidewalks in new residential neighborhoods, and that was Lockhart, Cleburne, and we already mentioned Waco. And in those cities, they only required on collectors and arterials, as is suggested by the home builders. And then Cleburne and Waco also add school areas or near parks, or in Waco, near the So, some of the concerns, just wanted to briefly touch on, one of them is that we can't afford it. It's too expensive for San Angelo. And I'll just note here a few of the cities that have a lower median income of people who live in their community as compared to San Angelo, but all of them do require sidewalks in their new development. And then, safety. It's been brought up that sidewalks will make it less safe in the community, and all evidence points to the contrary. The Federal Highway Administration indicates here that sidewalks separated from the roadway is the most safe way to accommodate pedestrians in the community. And they also note that roadways without sidewalks are more than twice as likely to have pedestrian crashes. So, one of the things we'll talk about again is in, in neighborhoods, and as you know, our street standards today are designed to accommodate pedestrians in the right-of-way, or in the street pavement. So, we, our streets are wider than normal. If we compare with our peer cities, our street standard is wider, and that was done on purpose to allow space in the street for people to walk. And so, it's, it's not before you today, but one of the things that will be coming to you is a proposal to narrow our street standards. And we think that's kind of a corollary to this. If, if you don't adopt sidewalks on some of those streets, then I think staff would have a concern about narrowing those street standards, because again, if, if we're going to tell people where you need to walk is in the street, then it does make sense for those streets to be a little wider. If, on the other hand, we adopt a sidewalk standard, then those streets with sidewalks can be built more narrowly, and that, as we talk about cost, yes, sidewalks will cost some. Narrower streets will save the developer money on that side of things. So, it's definitely not a wash. The sidewalks are more expensive than you save from the narrower street, but it is partially offsetting those costs. I won't read through all of this. This was a, a report done a couple of years ago by the National Complete Streets Coalition. That's a, a group that advocates for sidewalks around the country, and I'll just note some of the folks who are members of that partnership of complete streets. Again, I won't read through all of these, but some high-level national organizations that are out there advocating for complete streets. So, now to the ordinance summary. Again, these are some things that there has not been, at least to this point, raised any concerns about. Sidewalks would continue to be triggered during the plating process and, as well as the site plan process, but those could be deferred to construction. So, in other words, under state law, our city's authorities to require infrastructure like roads and sewer and water and sidewalks largely comes from the subdivision plating authority. And so, it would, that's the reason this is housed within the subdivision ordinance itself, and so those processes would trigger it. But even though it's triggered at the plat, it can be deferred to the construction, and as you'll note through the second bullet there, we've written into the ordinance that if it's for single-family home development, it would automatically be extended so that you would build the sidewalk when the home is built, not at the plating process. As I mentioned, sidewalks would be required on all major collector and arterial streets. We've not heard any opposition to that part of the ordinance right there. We're really talking about the minor collectors and local streets within a neighborhood where there's some question of whether or not we require those or not. And it does also establish a variance or waiver process to ask for not to have to build a sidewalk. And so, one of the big differences there is that that can be approved by staff. So, right now, many of the variances for sidewalks come to you all to make that decision. This would allow staff to make that decision. If they don't agree with staff, they always have the ability to appeal that to you all. So, it, it doesn't change anything in that respect. It just makes it an easier process in those circumstances where staff would support it. And I'll note that, as I think we talked about at the last meeting, you see lots of plats and things where staff doesn't even recommend sidewalks. And so, I, I think as we see this move forward, we will be supportive of waivers in those circumstances where it makes sense. But again, if, if the developer doesn't agree with that, they can always appeal it to you, and if they don't agree with you, they can appeal that to City Council as well. So, under the ordinance, as staff is recommending, it would also require sidewalks on local streets and minor collectors with some exceptions, and as I mentioned earlier, rural development, industrial, and already developed areas. So, the one exception that we'll talk about in a second is whether to expand those exceptions to include newly-built single-family areas. This is just kind of for reference. I'll largely skip over it, but in case there are questions, it, throughout this process, I've gotten people asking a question, well, what's a minor arterial versus a major, or what's a minor collector? And so, these are just some examples picked from around town to kind of give an indication of what kinds of streets we're talking about. But again, under the draft ordinance, all three of these, major arterials, minor arterials, and major collectors, development along those would require sidewalks in most cases, but then minor collectors, which are usually the ones within a neighborhood, would not if you follow the option two that's recommended by the home builders. Yeah?
So, the major arterials that you have listed are actually highways? Right, as a highway?
Most of those are, yes.
Knickerbocker is, Sherwood Way is, Avenue N is not, but...
Right.
Okay.
So, the list of outstanding policy issues, so these are the things we're asking for your direction on. One is, the, I think the big one is whether to require sidewalks in new neighborhoods or not. Option one, which is to require in, in new development. Option two is to exclude single-family home areas, and so largely sidewalks would get built on the major streets and then in commercial apartments, you know, those kinds of areas. So, the second question, our ordinance as drafted would, would require sidewalks in the ETJ. Now, I'll caveat that to say with the rural exemption of lots over one acre, that's most development in the ETJ. So, sidewalks would typically only get built in the ETJ for a smaller lot development that's already building to typical urban street standards, so curb and gutter and that sort of street, rather than the rural street standard with ditches and, and that sort of thing. So, those ditched streets on one-acre lots would not require sidewalks in any case, whether you apply this in the ETJ or not. And just to note, one of the reasons that we apply most of our development standards in the ETJ, that is the area within which the city is expected to grow and expand into over time, and it's in the city's interest to have those areas developed to city standards so that as those areas come into the city, that there's an equivalent to what's already in the city limits. So, there are a few other minor, those are the two big ones, I think, new neighborhoods and ETJ. There are a few issues that also come out of the discussion on this. Minor streets outside of single-family neighborhoods. I thought there was mostly agreement on this, but I think in, in some recent discussions, there's been the question raised of exempting local streets altogether. So, even if you're in a commercial area or apartments, the, the, the draft that the home builders sent you in, in your packet would exempt, as it's written, would exempt all local streets, regardless of single-family or commercial area. A second question is recommending separation or a barrier between parked vehicles and sidewalks. In areas, we do have sidewalks, and the parking lot comes right up to the sidewalk, we often see cars that will park encroaching over the sidewalk, making them impassable in some cases, particularly for people who are mobility impaired or in wheelchair. And so, what our, our staff recommended ordinance would require either separation of the parking lot from the sidewalk, or something like a curb stop that would stop vehicles from encroaching over that sidewalk. Should a sidewalk be required where properties on the same block already have sidewalks? As I mentioned... As I mentioned, the draft ordinance would exempt already-developed areas, but where there are no sidewalks. So if you're on a street like in many of the streets in Santa Rita that do have sidewalks, and let's say you're the one missing piece, that your neighbors have sidewalks, our ordinance would suggest that you would have to put in a sidewalk if you're rebuilding a house or something in those areas that already have sidewalks. I think the home builder's recommendation is in these residential areas, you wouldn't have to build sidewalks even if there are sidewalks nearby. Another one is, our ordinance would require sidewalks in areas where they're in an adopted city plan. Many cities have safe routes to schools plans where they work with the school district to determine where kids walk from the neighborhood to the schools. And those adopted plans could add, you know, let's say you exempt sidewalks in new neighborhoods. If it's in a safe routes-to-school plan, those streets would actually still have to have sidewalks if it's on the school's designated safe route plan. But again, the home builder's recommendation is to leave that out, that o- only on the listed, as we've already talked about, would require sidewalks. We couldn't adopt a plan that would add additional areas to that. So that's kind of the overview. I know I went through it fairly quickly, and I know there'll be some discussion and questions. But what we're asking from you today is one of two things. We want to have a discussion. If you're ready to take action on an ordinance, it's posted for that. But if you want to give staff direction to go back and make changes to the ordinance one way or another, we can do that and bring it back to you at a future meeting. So that's, that's really what we're looking for, is that discussion and direction from you all. Have to answer any questions?
Anyone have questions for John?
Yeah, I got, have a couple. Just some, maybe some clarification on a couple of things. So in the proposed, or the draft ordinance that you sent out on the twenty-fifth of October, I think that's the most current, right?
Yes.
Under item D sidewalk requirements, could you talk a little bit about, under number two, C and D, locations that would connect existing or otherwise required sidewalks, kind of like what you were talking about, but, but there's a mention of two-hundred-and-fifty feet? Then it also just kind of broadly in item D, again, I think states the same thing, but to me, it seems like maybe that broadens it a little bit more to where it could be, there, there's some more discretion that could be used by staff, making a recommendation of whether or not there should be a sidewalk there.
Well, yes. And now, I, I wouldn't say there's any discretion there. We, we tried to keep the discretion out of it. And so it's basically saying if you're on a block that has sidewalks already, you would have to put in a sidewalk as part of any development redevelopment. So what would that, was trying to get away from is, one of the things we looked at was requiring it if the adjacent property has a sidewalk. But there are circumstances where, like a whole, most of a whole block has sidewalks, but maybe the properties on either side of the subject property don't. In those circumstances, we think a sidewalk would still be important to help close in those gaps. And so that's really what that is intended to do.
John, on item C four, where you talk about the, that the property owner shall be responsible for maintenance of the sidewalks, what's the process you want to, for us to look at? Is there a fine? Is it a crime? Who's the police to ensure that these sidewalks are indeed, you know, safety? What we've looked at in other, when I did my research, there's a lot of those cities that you mentioned that the sidewalks are totally deteriorated. So what's the process you're recommending to police it? And then for the senior citizens, some of those, just like we do with the trash, is there anything there that would help the senior citizens or other individuals, a fifty-fifty plan to help maintain them?
Well, let me first say, u- under the current city ordinance, maintenance is the responsibility of the property owner, so that's no change. In terms of enforcement, it would be the city's normal enforcement process, which would include largely led by code enforcement, the code enforcement division. So if they get a complaint about a sidewalk, they would send a notice to the property owner saying your sidewalk is in need of repair and give them a timeframe within which to repair it. And then after that, they could issue citations if it's not done within that timeframe. The city's current ordinance has already allowed the city, the city could go out and repair it and bill the property owner or place a lien on the property for the cost of doing that. And so that's, that's our kind of general enforcement policy as it is today.
But just like the weed violations, if the city is actually coming out and repairing the sidewalk for the homeowner, how much more expensive is that going to be versus a contractor doing it?
Well, it depends. Based on our estimates, I know one of the things I didn't include in here was we talk about cost. We early on did an estimate of how much it would cost to build sidewalks on a property. And what we heard from the developers was, well, that's too cheap. You know, it cost us more to do that. So I, I mean, maybe they can answer that better than I can, but I know on, we based our number on the cost of preparing a sidewalk or building a sidewalk on actual cost from recent city sidewalk projects. And so based on that information, I would assume that the city can do it cheaper than, than the private can do.
I really am.
Again, that's what the developers told us when we gave them an estimate for how much it costs to build a sidewalk. They said that's way too low. We can't do it that cheap.
So when you got these bids or estimates on what you thought that it was going to cost, where, what cities did you survey?
Those were actual, the city has built sidewalks, and that's the actual cost the city has paid for sidewalks on street projects and sidewalk projects.
The cost of concrete goes up daily in, right now. So that's...
It fluctuates, just like asphalt. Okay, minor collectors. That seems to be one of the thresholds in this discussion. Can you please explain minor collectors, provide examples?
Yeah, and minor collectors, especially when we talk about neighborhoods, are typically, they're kind of the roads that you get out of the neighborhood on. So, so the street you live on is typically a local street. And then as you're driving out of the neighborhood, it's the first slightly bigger street that you get to that leads you typically to a larger street like an arterial or a major collector. So again, some of those, if, if you're in the Southland area, Green Meadow is, is kind of a larger street that is, they're typically more heavily trafficked. They're usually built a little bit wider. But they're not as big as like a major collector as you get to Sunset or Southland, which are the even bigger streets.
So in Santa Rita, would Avenue J and Avenue L be considered minor collectors?
Interestingly, no. I think the only, in, in that area, Beauregard is a minor collector. I would argue Livock functions as a minor collector, but it's not designated that. Avenue J probably could be considered a collector based on the traffic, but it's not currently designated as that.
And what is the process for designating these streets within these neighborhoods?
Both in the city's thoroughfare plan, and so it, typically, we look at the thoroughfare plan for new developed areas where new collectors and arterials should go. But it's also that planned document that designates existing collectors.
Okay.
Along those same lines, one of the things you mentioned was looking in the future at potentially narrowing the street or minimum pavement requirements for these different classifications of streets. What kind of issues does that cause with stormwater drainage?
Well, I, I know engineering's here, they've looked at that. My understanding of the answer is it's not enough of a difference to, to make a difference. Those narrower streets, again, our peer cities we looked at have narrower street standards like we're looking at, and many of them, Lubbock, Abilene have similar drainage issues as we do. And so that narrowing is not enough to make a difference on the, a substantial difference on the drainage. It would still convey the drainage, in other words.
What is the current requirement for the width of a minor collector?
Fifty feet pavement?
Fifty?
Yeah.
And a local's forty?
A local's forty if you don't build a sidewalk.
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six if you build a sidewalk. But we would be looking at an even narrower, probably like a thirty-two with a sidewalk, or thirty-six without a sidewalk.
John, what does staff believe will happen to upgrades to buildings or asking for permits to, you know, improve the, the structure itself if a sidewalk is required? So in, if I decide to do an upgrade to my house, and I take a look at that, then I take a look at the sidewalk cost, do you think that will deter some of these homeowners from doing the upgrades or the repairs?
No, again, if, if it's an existing, already-developed house, it would not require a sidewalk anyway. Even if it was in one of these unique areas like near a school that might trigger a sidewalk, a remodel project isn't, would not trigger. You have to be replating the property, building a new house, or doing a substantial remodel on a commercial building to trigger it. Remodeling of a house, an existing house, would not trigger a sidewalk.
So construct, so, okay, commercial only, okay.
So I, in that same line, I guess, of thinking on section D, item four in the, the draft ordinance, second paragraph, it mentions "internal pedestrian circulation shall be provided by sidewalk or other like improvement, or like approved improvements in any new development or redevelopment." So I guess, could you walk me through what you envision that process to be? Because that seems a little concerning to me that staff could recommend a full sidewalk plan within a...
Look, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you point where you?
So I, item C, number four.
Item C, number four. Okay, thank you.
Second paragraph.
Under general requirements, C four. So except as otherwise provided under this section five?
Yeah, second paragraph after that opening
Okay.
paragraph, where it discusses internal pedestrian circulation and a commercial development or redevelopment.
Yes, and, and I think that it goes back to section E, which is when a sidewalk requirement is triggered. So any of those requirements listed under C or D are only triggered by a plat, which is E one, a newer amended site plan, which is for commercial development, and E two, or three, a certificate of occupancy, where there's development requiring a major site plan or a site plan for a new residence. So under our site plan standards, a major site plan is one with, you know, for commercial development only, for new buildings, development over a certain size, increase, expansion. So again, remodeling, redevelopment that doesn't include new construction of brand-new buildings would never trigger a sidewalk.
But a new building would, or an additional building?
An additional building, if it was over the threshold for, in terms of size, I think we may be looking at a dollar amount figure.
I saw that in some of the previous drafts, but I don't see it in the current.
We took that out because we're, we're also looking at a, an amendment to our site plan to clarify the site plan requirements. And that's already going to be in there, so we're just deferring to that. But it would have to be a major site plan for commercial development or a brand-new house for a housing development that would, those things would trigger. So remodeling, again, would not trigger sidewalks.
Anyone else have questions for John or the staff?
If I could make one more note, you did get a, a draft that's the ordinance revisions recommended by the Development Task Force and Home Builders Association. I just wanted to note, I think I included this in the email to you all, some of that you'll note is highlighted in yellow. Those are revisions that staff was comfortable with, and so just, just wording, clarification kinds of things. So I just wanted to point that out, that those are just minor wording things that we're fine with. It's, it's things that aren't highlighted that I think are in question.
John, at one point in time, on one of the slides, it said that y'all were going to establish a process of waivers of sidewalks. You know, obviously, eventually, if the homeowner or builder does not agree with the staff's decision, it can be appealed to planning or council. Do you already have a draft of how that waiver process would play out?
Oh yeah, that's actually item F, section F in this ordinance is that waivers, so it's established right here in this ordinance.
In the same section, I, I guess, I just have a question about this, kind of semantics probably, but on item one, number, or letter B, areas with severe topography, what is severe?
Well, and that was one of the recommendations of the group, to take out the word severe. That's one of the things we're fine with.
Okay.
I think that was taken from another city's ordinance and...
Every, every piece of land has topography, so.
I think that's why, that's why that was in there, is you don't want to say, you know, there's a one percent slope, so that's topography. But it's a, again, that's just a, it, it's a judgment call by staff, planning commissioner, council. So an applicant would just make their case, oh, the topography's bad. And you all, or us, or city council would make that decision. Is it bad enough to warrant saying they don't have to build a sidewalk?
Okay. Anyone else have questions? All right. Before we open this up for public comment, there are a lot of folks here that have come to speak, and we welcome all of you. But we would like to try to move through this as, as efficiently as we can. So I'm going to limit an individual's presentation to three minutes and ask the staff to help us with the clock. And when you come up, if you would, please state your name and either your address or single-member district for the record. We would appreciate it. And I'm going to open it up for public comment now.
My name's Tony Jones. I'm a developer and builder here in town. Thank you for having us. John talked a lot about his, his proposed ordinance and very little about ours, but it's included in your packet. The one that we came up with, if you will, the HBA. This ordinance is kind of painted like the HBAs, but I think at some level, I could speak for everybody in this room. At some level, I can speak for them. Costa DC, who ordered the study from two thousand and nineteen, I think I can speak for them. Actually, the language in that study states that moving forward, if we're to have affordable housing in San Angelo, Texas, it's going to take, I'm paraphrasing, but it's going to take, what I understood to say...
Sorry to interrupt you. Could, could you step forward just a little bit?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I, I think that it kind of alludes to the fact that we need great latitude from planners, from council members, from planning directors in order to be able to keep homes affordable in San Angelo, Texas. That was, I was at the end of the, end of the study that said, if this is going to happen, this has got to happen. And we've seen none of that. So John and his presentation mentioned that he started his process a couple of years ago, this process. What I would propose to you is that he started the day he got here. As a matter of fact, however many years ago that was, it seemed like a lifetime, John. But one of his leading things with us, when he met with the development community, is that he intended to have a sidewalk ordinance in San Angelo, and that new subdivisions would have sidewalks. He had done it in Abilene, gonna do it here. So that's been, that's been kind of his bailiwick ever since he's got here. So for three years or four years, or however long John's been here, he's had his entire staff. He's had an attorney on twenty-four-hour call in order to develop all of this and make this look this nice, okay? So I would propose to you that we need at least that much time and that kind of legal activity. Is that my three minutes?
No.
Okay. So all, I, all I want to state very clearly is what we have been bringing to John since he's been here as a workaround on this sidewalk, as a workaround on this sidewalk thing. Development community, the home building development community, which is just a fraction of the development that goes on in... is just a fraction of the development that goes on in San Angelo, Texas, the most of it's done by, most of it's done by commercial developers. The city doesn't develop the town, folks. Private individuals do, and then they give the improvements to the city. The city, the, the home builders and developers in San Angelo, Texas, just do not feel like that mandating new sidewalks in the southwest part of town, for the most part, is going to do any of the rest of the city any good. It's not going to put sidewalks where they're A, needed, or B, wanted, okay? Can those people afford it? Sure they can. Staff has made that very clear. What we want to do is engage with the city and put sidewalks where they need to be, instead of coming to us and asking us to be partners with the city. Putting a sidewalk out here by this school, uh, by Lucy's school, if you will, come to us and ask us how we can help build that sidewalk, instead of mandating a $5,000 to $10,000 sidewalk on every home in the southwest part of town that doesn't want them or need them. That's what we're proposing. Now, John was kind enough to rewrite our ordinance. Would you pull up, Jeff, the document that I brought in on Friday?
Let me hurry up.
Oh, sorry. John was kind enough to agree, uh, with Daniel in a meeting that he would rewrite our ordinance, okay, in ordinance form. And so, it's interesting, but not entirely surprising that our ordinance came back looking very much like John's. I would, I would, I would challenge anybody in this room to take this ordinance home, grab any engineer in town that you want to grab, and try, and let me hand you a plat for 40 new lots, and try to figure out whether or not they're going to be required or not. So, I have to go buy land to develop it before I even know what the requirements of the city are going to be. He's pulled this last-minute requirement many times since he's been here. Street width, I mean, you know, we just want to put sidewalks where they're needed. We're willing, as, as the HBA and the home building development community, we're willing to participate with the city on, at some level, to help get these sidewalks where they're needed, but not in the southwest part of town. To say that narrowing these streets will not affect stormwater is absolutely untrue. I spent four years in this room with city engineers, city planners, all these consulting companies in the late 2000s, early 2 teens, developing a stormwater plan for this city. And when you narrow those streets, it raises that water, folks. It raises the level of water. Also, we haven't heard from the fire department about narrowing these streets. Currently, we have streets that are wide enough for a car to be parked by the curb on both sides, and a fire truck without any problem getting down that street during an emergency. Now, when we start chopping the width out of that street, here's what you get. You get a fire truck that's going to struggle to get down the middle of the street if cars are parked on both sides of the street, all right? They can still do it, but it's not going to be easy under emergency situations. And then, if we put sidewalks on both sides, people can't park in the streets anymore, folks. That's where we're headed. John, you know, a lot of what John is proposing in this ordinance, and I'm, we're proposing sidewalks being required in new subdivisions under the following circumstances. And those circumstances, right there in that one paragraph, covers about four pages, right here, of the way he's got it written. So, we're proposing something simple and to the point. Sidewalks are required for there's any of the triggers that we have listed, any of them. We're okay with sidewalks in residential subdivisions. To say that we're not is, is ingenuous. Um, I'm about out of time, uh, but, you know, this is a lot like the bill that's being considered in Washington DC today. It's in there. It's, oh, it's other, it's in this other document. We'll find it, we'll work it out later. And so, we've been trying to work it out later with John, ever since he's been here, and the thousands, tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars that the city of San Angelo has spent, listening to me, is, is beyond the pale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Good morning. I'm Kristin Oliver. I'm with the Home Builders Association, and I'm here on behalf of the building community. Um, as you have heard, we, we did present a separate, uh, proposal that would eliminate the need for sidewalks on local and minor collectors. And that is basically the main difference. We are not against sidewalks. We are glad to put them in around schools, churches, parks, everything. But this is really about so much more than just sidewalks. This is about killing development. Not that it might kill development, but that these sidewalk requirements have already killed development. And I'm going to give you two instances. We had two builders that were going to be putting in some very affordable homes on 30th and Travis Street. So, they did all their plats, brought it in, and the city said, you know what? We want you to put sidewalks here, even though the sidewalks led to a drainage ditch. So, they came in and they said, okay. They, they talked to a guy about putting in sidewalks, and it was going to cost over $50,000 to put in these sidewalks for these 11 homes. But the, the guy that was going to be doing the sidewalks says, but you've got another problem. The, the curbs here are very, very tall. So, when we cut in to put in these sidewalks, the rise is going to be greater to, and it's not going to meet ADA requirements. The city said, well, you know what? Figure it out. You're either going to have to put in a, a retaining wall, you're going to have to do something to make these sidewalks ADA compliant, which you want a sidewalk that's ADA compliant. And the builders just said, there's no way. The margins on these affordable homes are so narrow and so small, there's no way to build these homes and make them, to be able to sell them to be affordable. So, they dropped the project. Same thing happened in the Southland Hills addition. They had everything done, and then the city said, you know what? We want you to put in a four, four-road street here and sidewalks everywhere. And after a bunch of back and forth, the developers just said, never mind, we're done. And so, there's over 200 homes that are not in the process of being built due directly because of these sidewalks. That's 200 homes that are not going to be able to hit the market, which we desperately need. That's 200 homes that are not going to be going into San Angelo's perpetual property tax base as well. Um, I know the city says that, you know, it's really not that much of a cost, but honestly, that's what all this is about, is about cost and about keeping housing affordable. And I know for some people, they say it's not that big a deal. It only adds $10 to $12 a month to a local mortgage, you know, your mortgage. But for some people, that is a make or break whether they can buy that home. According to the Texas A&amp;M Research Development Center, it says for every $1,000 that the cost of a, a cost of a home goes up, that knocks out 22,000 Texans. So, do the math. You put in one simple sidewalk, and that's going to knock out 110,000 Texans from being able to afford that sidewalk. The housing study that was done in 2019, which Tony referenced, and I want to read to you exactly what it says. It says, "In order for all these homes to be developed," it says, "they're going to require the creation and implementation of a relaxed zoning permitting, infrastructure assistance, and approval to builders and developers, as well as assistance and intervention policies." Let me just tell you, the sidewalk ordinance does the complete opposite. It is actually stopping development. It is not helping development at all. And you know, the last couple of years or year and a half, we have had a perfect storm in the building industry. We are still dealing with a increase, and there is no skilled labor. We've had supply chain, uh, chain shortages. We don't know when we're getting materials in. There's been a huge increase in material costs. And now we're looking at an increase in the mortgage interest rates, which is going to knock out even more people from being able to afford homes. I know when this whole sidewalk situation came up, um, the comment was made that they wanted to put sidewalks everywhere, and the comment was, Wade, well, we've got to start somewhere. Well, I would throw that back around to you and say, if you want to keep development continuing in San Angelo and you want to keep housing affordable, you've got to start somewhere. And by denying the sidewalk proposal, it's going to be an excellent place to start. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
Russell Gully, SKG Engineering, single, single-member district one through six or seven. I'll, I cover all of San Angelo. I'm not biased. Um, I'm kind of the eternal optimist here. So, what I want to do is, is take the, uh, proposed, the ordinance proposed by the developers, uh, community and the HBA, and, and kind of go through that and, and hit some of the high spots. So, um, and kind of go through it. I'm, I'm a, I'm a take a document, I'm a read through every word and, and pick it apart, because at the end of the day, when we're all gone, it's going to be left for someone else to read and interpret. And, and so, we've been dealing with this vague ordinance about when and where sidewalks are requirement. And, and I don't, I'm, I'm the last person that wants to leave that vagueness for the next people to deal with. So, so I appreciate y'all reading through that and asking those very important questions. And, and if it's vague to me or to anybody else, let's clear it up, or let's cut it out. If it's, or if it duplicates, let's solve that. Let's take some time. There's, this isn't have to be done tomorrow or, or in two months. Let's take some time, and let's get it right, and let's look at every word and put it under the microscope, and, and let's evaluate it. And if we need to slow down and, and even pull up this, the street widening revision ordinance, let's do that. Because that's, I, to me, those go hand in hand. I don't know why you do one without the other. That's, well, that's, that's missing the mark. So, so let's slow down and, and let's bring those together. Because they've been talking about that narrowing of streets for quite some time. Now, we're going to do it, we're going to do it. Well, let's do it. We're ready to do it. We're having a conversation. Let's bring it all to the table and have a conversation about that. So, so we would like to, you know, if we need to slow it down and, and invite maybe two or three people, and we hash through some of the, these things, we're happy to do it, or we'll do it here, or answer questions, or I, I may have to ask some people to come up and, and yield their time to me so I can keep carrying on. So, I, I've got some family back there that would probably be happy to let me keep talking. So, so anyway, um, let's dive into it. Um, on A2, the purpose, you know, we put the city guarantees that. It, you know, we don't need to put that in there. That's just, you know, it was out of frustration. It's like, you know, hey, if they're going to put this in here and state all of this stuff, well, let's put it in there. No, that, that, we don't care about that. They can go away. Um, A2D, um, it, that's kind of about the ETJ. And when we've asked the city, what conversations have you had about, had with the county about this, how this impacts the county in the interim between when the property is annexed into the city? Because until then, it's, it's up for the county to potentially maintain and deal with. So, um, let's, let's bring the county in on this conversation if need be, or see what they're, maybe they say, we don't care, hands off, y'all go do what you want to do. But let's ask that question. Um, Mr. James talked about one-acre lots being exempted. There, there's a lot of development, and these developers in the ETJ will do half-acre lots. If, so if, if you have a public water system, you can go as small as half-acre lot. So, so if it's ETJ, let's maybe look at pulling that down. But there again, if the, if the residential, I don't know how official we are on, on keeping time.
Keep going.
Here on this. Um, let's, let's pull that. If, if we're exempting residential, then for the most part, the ETJ is kind of a, a non-discussion, because there's just really not a large amount of, of areas being developed in the city that, that will have a, you know, a, a minor collector on it. You know, we'd look at the master thoroughfare plan map and, you know, what areas are prime for development. And, and, you know, there's kind of the Lakeside Ranch area. Um, and there's talks about, what do we do at Twin Mountain Drive and, and stuff? So, I, you know, the ETJ is not a huge topic, especially if we're able to scale it back, and we're talking about the minor, the major collectors and arterial-type streets. So, ETJ, let's just ask the county, see what they say. Um, there's, there's this talk about the sidewalk design standards. Let's pull those in, and let's, there again, look at all of this holistically, and, and let's have a conversation to make sure we're all interpreting and understanding this correctly. So, for B1, we would like to see those sidewalk design standards. And John's provided us a draft to us, and it's just a matter of taking the time and going through that. And so, let's make sure we, we pull those in. Um, I think on C1, I believe staff's okay with our comments there. C2, the, one of the things that we were working through and we're doing, and y'all are so gracious to do currently on these sidewalks, is, is you'll defer the sidewalks. And, and I think there's been some discussion, and maybe it's some more discussions we need to have with staff on, when do we need to do deferral agreements, or when is it just kind of a planning commission approved deferral that it's just of the record and, and it's been deferred? Or do we need to do a deferral agreement? So, so maybe we need to talk a little bit more about what that truly looks like, and, and have the legal interpretation of when are deferral agreements necessary if we have a planning commercial, commission approval on a particular topic. All right. C3, staff's good with that. C5, for the commercial, um, property, I, I guess I'm kind of a private property rights person. And so, on five, the city is really stepping onto and into private property rights and telling private property people how they need to develop their property with respect to where sidewalks go. And I, I really believe the city maybe should step back out of that and stay out of that. Uh, there, there's some, the Texas accessibility standards and, and ADA kind of already do a great job of, of specifying when and where sidewalks are required on, um, commercial property. Um, you know, they say, if there's a public sidewalk out in the street right away, you've got to go from that to your building, and you got to go from your building to the handicap accessible parking spaces. So, so let's stop there. We don't, I don't want to get into and be having a conversation with some, some staff person reviewing a site plan over where they think a sidewalk needs to go, because the vagueness of this gives them, I think, the right to do that. So, I, I, like you talked about, Luke, you know, let's, let's focus and get very specific on where those sidewalks should go within the internal, um, commercial property. Um, skipping on down to D2, uh, there seems to be a lot of replication, maybe, of when sidewalks are required. It, you know, let's try to keep it very, very simple and, and kind of limit a lot of trying to say things differently and other way in another paragraph to be able to trigger a sidewalk. And, and so, you know, if it's going to be specific to an arterial and a major collector, then that's all it needs to say. And, and, and if it's a school route plan, let's get the school district involved. The home builders, they're not opposed to that safe routes to schools plan, but, but let's have the school district be part of that process. And if, if it's something that's approved by the city and the school district, you're not going to hear any complaints out of a developer wanting to put, or needing to put sidewalks within that school path. So, uh, let, let's put that in. If there's churches, you know, in new development, it's raw land, so you don't, and you don't know where a church may come. And so, if a church comes in at some point in the future, then, then maybe that church would have the obligation, kind of as part of their site plan, to put a sidewalk in. But as far as raw land development and its zone, whatever it may be, we, we won't know, you know, and, and, and thank God, your churches are popping up, you know? That's what we all need right now. But, you know, when they come in, if they're in an area that doesn't have sidewalks, then, then they may need to do that. So, and then the, we kind of, we also hit the high point. Uh, let me find some of my notes again. Too many papers here. There was talk about infill or when sidewalks need to go, or if there any, if you're redeveloping or developing and there's a sidewalk within your block. You know, let's maybe get specific on that. If, if, if we need to say that, that there's, you know, that block has at least 75% or 50% of that block face already has sidewalks, then you 50% of that block face already has sidewalks, then you go in. But if you could say there's a sidewalk within 250 feet either direction and, and three houses down, there's a 50-foot segment of sidewalk and they say, oh, that triggers your sidewalk, is that really a right thing to do? So, so maybe let's dig into that if we, but there again, if we're exempting sidewalks in residential areas, then maybe it's not a huge discussion. So, I'm trying to figure out which kind of rabbit trail to chase after on, on some of these. So, but there again, I think that the focus is let's get very specific and remove any ambiguity in there. And, and I think with what you see in the Santa Rita area, if there was a maintenance issue, they just yanked the sidewalk out and wouldn't spend the money to put it back. So, I don't know what does that say and how do we deal with that? You know, just, there was, there was talk about the cost of sidewalks. And, and it's hard. You know, if the city's letting out a $5 million, $10 million project and there's some sidewalks in there, yeah, the unit price of that sidewalks, because it's part of this huge project, may not be all that expensive. A, a, a home builder just putting in a 60-foot strip of sidewalk, you know, the guy's got to mobilize, they got to come do that. So, maybe it is a little more expensive, but, but it's really hard to say. At the end of the day, we see, you know, concrete flat work going from $7 to $10 a square foot. And so, if you take a four to five-foot sidewalk, you know, that could be anywhere from, from $28 to $50 a linear foot. And you do that on a 60-foot wide lot, you know, you're $2,000 to $3,000 that you're adding immediately to the price of that lot, that house. Little sidebar there. And so, it, it all adds up. Let's skip on down to E. When sidewalks, when sidewalk requirement is triggered. E1 to us was almost a reduplication of, and should have been stated in, in D. So, you know, there again, it was kind of, let's state something once and only once and not restate and try to have opportunities for other, you know, ambiguities, if you will. And then the no amended, a commercial or what kind of site plan are we talking about here? You know, residential site plans. I thought we were all talking about sidewalks weren't going to be required on residential streets. But here again, when a sidewalk requirement is triggered, under E2, someone could read that, it says, no new amended commercial site plan, including a residential site plan. So, I could read that, that guess what? You've got a, you're turning in a residential site plan to, to build a home? You have to have a sidewalk. When, when sidewalk requirement is triggered? So, so right there, it's, that's read to, you could trigger sidewalks. So, so is that the appropriate place to put that? Maybe not. If we're not going to require sidewalks in residential, then, then let's clear that Same thing then there again for E3. They add that, or a site plan for a new residence. Oh, well, we didn't catch you on your building plan, so we're going to catch you when you come in to get your CO, that you got to put a sidewalk in. So, so let's clear that up. I think that's really it. We're, we're good with everything else. I would be happy to answer any questions. The, the drainage deal, you know, what do we do with the streets? Do we narrow the streets? Does it increase the drainage problem? Location, location, location. Yes and/or no. You know, at some point, we, we evaluate every new street that goes in and we're checking depth of flow for the two-year event and the 100-year event. Six inches depth for the two-year event, a foot of depth for the 100-year event. And, and if we're underneath that, hey, things are great and, and we keep on plugging. And, and honestly, a lot of times, the, the two-inch, the, the two-year event is more of a potential problem than the 100-year event for that criteria. So, if we're going to look at narrowing down the streets, sure, maybe some locations, you're at the top of the hill, you're the first, you're up at the top and there's not much drainage in the street, not a problem, you can narrow the street. But if you're at the bottom of the street, we're, we're looking at some areas that they're kind of the bottom of the street and we're scratching our head. You know, do we need to make the street wider? Do we need to invert the street? Storm drain? What all do we need to do? So, so that storm drainage question is, is a good one. And, and it's something that we, we just have to work through. When you do development, there's a lot of challenges and opportunities, if you will, to work through those types of things. So, anyway, I appreciate what you guys do and happy to answer any questions.
Want to have questions for Russell?
Russell, I, I appreciate you taking the time to speak and I agree with you about the, the conversation about adding road widths to this discussion about sidewalks. I think they do, they do run hand in hand. And, and the other thing I want to clarify, and I've, and I've stated this at points in the past, but to me, when it comes to development predictability, being able to walk in and understand what the rules are is paramount to development. And so, we don't have a sidewalk ordinance as it is. We rely on the staff and the planning commission and the city council to trigger those, those circumstances and events where they are required. And that's a problem. That's what we're trying to address. And, and in that discussion, you know, whether we have sidewalks in neighborhoods or not is clearly a discussion that we're going to have and it's important. But the end goal, I think, for all of us is to have a clear understanding of where sidewalks are going. So that when someone has a, has a project that they want to move forward with, they understand whether or not it requires a sidewalk and how road, how wide the road has to be and, and all the other requirements for that development. So, okay, let's continue with public comment. Anyone else want to speak?
Rocky Templin. As an example, let's just start back with a case y'all just heard. Subdivision Campos, subdivision section 1, minor collector street, which did not require a sidewalk. Chapter 95. City may require heavy pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Since sometime about 2017, I think, the planning staff has used the word "may require" on how and when. And so, that's one prime example where Coliseum Drive is a major thoroughfare, heavy traffic. On some of the other cases, such as October 21st of 2019, Bentwood, Wolf Creek, Vice Chair Spano responded, ask on a $350,000, $400,000 home, that a 4,000 sidewalk would be a deal breaker. Chair Strimling indicated that the city would not want to miss the opportunity to obtain a sidewalk in this location and that would be a start. It was voted to deny the variance of the sidewalk. On the following next case, on Concho River Estates, a variance to reduce the paving to 32-foot, the staff request for a sidewalk in the area would be future development and was put on a note on the plat. Mr. John James, Plan Director, Services Director, explained that because the sidewalk was not a requirement of the plat, that the note did not need to be removed. And he said that while it could not be removed, it serves as a reminder for future developers that a sidewalk is required. Planning manager got up and said, well, this is a highly traveled area by large trucks that take extra wide turns. Vice Chair Spano indicated that he doesn't believe there'll be any growth will happen in this area. When we look back and we go back to May 20th of 2019 in Bentwood, section 41, the applicant withdrew the request because of a sidewalk variance issue. He went on to the next one, which was section 42, Wolf Creek. And Chair Strimling indicated that this would be a good opportunity for a sidewalk. They ended up approving the variance for chapter 9, land vision sidewalk, so there would not be a sidewalk on Wolf Creek. The very next case was on Aaron Woodruff Street, an urban minor collector. 60-foot minimum required, 50-foot minimum, 30-foot, 36-foot existing sidewalk on both Era and Woodruff. And neither one required a sidewalk. Going back to Bentwood, August 16th of 2021, revised plat, section 42A, to remove the sidewalk, minor collector. Minutes were not available online, but I was here. Y'all voted to approve that. On the same previous case before that, the Twin Oaks Edition, section 28, the background on July 19th of 2021, the planning commission approved a final plat, 21 lots, associated primary plat, preliminary plat, a requirement sidewalks along both sides of Coral Way, a future collector street, which as we know right now, goes nowhere. The first 1900 feet of that street is 40-foot wide and then the city changed it to 50-foot wide. And the same case happened in the Meridian where Royal Oak, which is going to be a future minor collector, is 40-foot wide and they've changed it to 50-foot wide. Since about 2018, I believe it was July, John had a street width and specifics, specification to addendum, July 30th of 2018. When he was first going to start reducing streets to as low as 30 feet and a minor collector would be 36 feet. A major collector could be 36 feet, a major, minor arterial 48 feet and a major 56 feet. Since we've been meeting since then, about three and a half years, the current version of section 95 from 1959 worked until Mr. James got here. When he took the words "may require" to where John requires. He wants to compare to the closest comparable cities. Let's do. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration fatalities, Abilene, pedestrian deaths, 2.29, ranked 72. Colleen, 5.71, ranked 68. Lubbock, 6.43, ranked 36. Midland, 2, ranked 108. Odessa, 6.14, 4.12 per 100,000, ranked number 1. San Angelo, 1.29, 1.12 per 100,000, ranked 131. So, I would say we're doing something right. What if the next study San Angelo is on the list with sidewalks? And we're up 500% in deaths. The Federal Highway Administration, which he was talking about, mentioned reconstruction in a public right of way, best practice to require sidewalks. The city just reconstructed Southwest to Sherwood Way, totally including curb and gutter, and did not install sidewalks. John also mentioned AARP, a handout which he gave some people a while back ago. So, the cost that was on there with $2,000 was from 2009. The current, which I've gotten some bids, which include engineering, permitting, base compaction, forms of material, expansion, steel, labor, concrete, $15 a square foot. On a 70-foot house with a four-foot sidewalk, I'm looking at $4,200. And if you're on the corner and you didn't win the Lotto, 190 feet at four foot can cost you $11,400. Also on the handout that he gave you, I don't think he failed to mention that under the liability, the Texas case's liability is county by county. In several cities, Houston and Austin have both been sued for sidewalks. Also, on a page that y'all did not receive, the third page, it did say, since sidewalks are public benefit, a better policy would be to install and maintain sidewalks with So, we can do what we've been doing for 62 years or we can change. I think everyone wants to know where, when, how are we supposed to do sidewalks? And then they can let the staff spend the majority of their time on something other than sidewalks. As an add-on, I do want widths of paving and right of way, not local, minor, collector or major or arterial in the future, because soon as this is over, this other document with John is going to be the next document that comes down the pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky.
Chairman, counsel. My name is Gary Cortez. I've been in the building business for over 40 years now. My name and my company is Affordable Family Homes. I believe everyone's covered the bases pretty well here. So, some of my notes and everything that I was going to use, they've already been covered. Rocky hit on the pedestrian deaths being low in San Angelo and, you know, our office over there by the Borgard Bridge. And when they redid that bridge, or redid the sidewalks there, they put up these barriers between the road and the sidewalk made out of concrete. And I often wondered, I thought, well, if sidewalks are so safe, why are they spending so much money between the road and the sidewalk? I'm sure y'all are familiar with the area, going over the Concho River there by the Sonic. They spent a lot of money doing that. And why'd they do that? Well, I thought, well, maybe the school, but they didn't do it on the Pecos Street Bridge. Okay, well, what's going on? So, I always, I always hung my hat on, we have low pedestrian deaths. We have wide streets, people walk in the streets, sure they do, but our line of sight is straight on. We're not having to look and people are getting killed in the crosswalks. They're getting killed at night on, in the crosswalks. The, 2007, with the former city manager, this has been going on since 2006 and 2007, the former city manager, Harold Dominguez, had a town hall meeting at Toleman School. And I build out in the Pauline area. So, I showed up and it was about sidewalks. And he was discussing all the same things John discusses and all the benefits and all that kind of stuff. And so, we asked the question, how many, how many, there was a full house, how many of y'all would like to have sidewalks? Everyone rose their hand, raised their hand. And I'm sitting there saying, okay, let me ask this question, how many of y'all want to pay for it? All hands went down. They don't want to pay for it. Not, I've, I've built a few houses in town and not one time have I ever had a request for a sidewalk in, in a local residential area. You know, like we're talking about, like the, our proposal, you know, we've gone over it ad nauseam, I won't go over it again, but our proposal covers where we think sidewalks are needed. So, my, my final say, I guess, would say, let's be careful. Let's kind of work along, let's kind of nudge it along and not get overbearing and start stamping sidewalks all over local streets and here we go. I mean, it's good I can, it looks good, but no one's going to use them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Looney, Vice President of Economic Development of the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. Commenting today on the fact that in San Angelo, we do need a lot more single-family housing and probably a lot more multifamily housing. As the VP of Economic Development, my task is to recruit corporations to San Angelo and we've had a pretty good, successful run over the past couple of years. But one of the problems that we've had is, is really highly compressed housing. And I know this is totally not anything that's new to anybody on the, on the dais or, or in the, in the gallery with us today. But I just wanted to make my voice heard that it has been a really big challenge recruiting companies and competing with some of our sister cities in the area. Also, we compete with a lot of cities outside of the state. Little Rock, Tulsa, Albuquerque, these are cities that we are in head-to-head competition with for the recruitment of corporations. Some of them are more tech company related, some of them are more manufacturing, some are supply chain and logistics companies. And these corporations, oftentimes, the, one of the first things they want to know is, is, is to talk about housing, because a lot of them will import their people along, along with the company. So, they'll So they'll take certain divisions and bring them here. We had that happen in 2018 with a well-servicing company, and it was kind of at the last minute, almost a showstopper, because they were bringing 46 people from Pennsylvania, and we realized that that's 46 single-family homes with big families, and that was really challenging. So I know we're all working collectively on trying to solve this problem. It's not going to get solved overnight, but without the multifamily developers and the single-family neighborhood developers, we are not going to be able to advance economic development and recruitment nearly as fast as we want. It really is a huge issue. We get asked that a lot. Tell us about your home developments, tell us about the ability that, to, to put people into different neighborhoods, near different schools. And it's really a tough one to get past. A lot of the things we can get past, as far as water capacity, electrical capacity, even, even workforce, isn't, isn't really as hard in some cases, but the housing has really been a, a big challenge for us. And I know it's a national issue, but as San Angeloans, I know we can solve it creatively. So anyway, I just wanted to add that, that when we talk about housing developments and the costs thereof to develop, along with the, the, the normal inflationary costs that are being derived because of supply chain issues and materials issues, is the fact that we need more single-family and multifamily housing in San Angelo. And it needs to be in that kind of affordable level. I mean, you'd probably say that 200 to $300,000 range, maybe that 250 sweet spot, seems to be where a lot of the companies that we recruit, that's the housing pricing that they're, that they're targeting, that they're looking for. So it's a, it's a big issue, and I do appreciate you and everybody here taking the time out of their day to focus on this issue. Without more housing, it's really going to put a, a real chokehold on future industrial development. So happy to answer any detailed questions, but thank you very much for letting me to speak today. Kristin, thank you very much. I have not had anybody mention sidewalks. It is really, seriously, availability, availability and location to schools. Those are the, the two biggest ones we get. Availability, what's available, and location of schools. Because we also are competing with Goodfellow. Goodfellow Air Force Base, as we all know, brings in 14,000 students per year, plus you've got permanent personnel that are here on TDY for, for three-year cycles. And I mean, frankly, from a lot of our multifamily developers, we know troop movements better than just probably anybody, because they know who's coming in and who's heading out. And the, the, so we're not only, industry is not only competing with just normal, organic movement of, of, of people, you know, moving up in homes or downsizing, but also with Goodfellow. So anyway, thanks very much.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for letting us speak. My name is Jim Slaughter. I'm the president of the Local Realtor Association. You've heard a lot of the experts speak this morning about sidewalks, and where they need it, or whether they're not needed. And I think Kristin said it well, it really all comes down to affordability of housing, having housing available, and those sorts of things. And then Gary, Gary mentioned one thing, you know, you ask people if they want sidewalks, everybody, their hands go up. Ask them if they want to pay for it, their hands go down. Okay, and that's one of the big things. The other thing that hasn't been brought up is, when you start asking those questions, not only do you have to pay for it, you have to maintain it, and oh, by the way, you are liable for it, which is one of the things that hasn't been mentioned today, is the liability that the homeowner is going to take on if that sidewalk runs across the, the front of their property. Okay, let alone it takes away part of their property from doing things that they want to do, even though there's easements there, the sidewalk is a whole different issue. And I think from listening to, from Russell, to Tony, to everybody else here, the one thing that I see is, we're nowhere close to having the kind of detail and ordinance that we need to protect our homeowners, which is one of the big things. And to echo Mayor Gunter, when we went to the first meeting on this, she asked the question, are the citizens of San Angelo demanding sidewalks? The answer to that question was no. Then she said, why are we? And I'll leave it with that, and say, thank you for letting us speak.
Hello, I'm Roy Zesch. I don't live in the city, but I work here in part of, part of my home. So one thing I have not heard brought up today is, is how, how this affects the property owners, from a taxing point of view, because when a developer puts in a development, they're forced by the city to, to put it in the streets, the utilities, underground utilities, curbs, gutters, all that stuff. Well, and so that then becomes property of the city as that development's done. But in this case, the sidewalk will be mandated on the homeowner, they'll be taxed on it the entire time they own the home, as they pass it on. It'll, it'll be taxed in perpetuity on something that's, while it's theirs, they can't use it, exclusively use it. They can use it, but not, not on an exclusive basis. So that's another way that the city is not, that they pushing the cost off onto the homeowner, and then taxing the homeowner on a benefit to the city. Thank you.
Right, I've got a question for you. Since you are an agent, going back to Goodfellow, so, you know, we rely on Goodfellow to assist in supporting the community. They bring in a lot of temporary, but also permanent residents to the community. In your opinion, has the base housing allowance increased over the last few years? Have you noticed? It's pretty, pretty flat, I believe. Right? So in your opinion, if, you know, a military client was trying to purchase a affordable home, and a sidewalk was required, basically increasing the cost of that $5,000, do you think their base housing would be able to cover their mortgage?
I don't know. I don't know the details of the base housing well enough to, to really address that.
My name is Kevin Collins. I'm the, I'm in Single Member District 1, Tommy Hebert, Bentwood Country Club. But I actually grew up in Santa Rita my whole life. And what I want to point out is, I remember about 10 or, being 10 or 11 years old, in every one of those driveways that had a, had a sidewalk, we all used those as a place to jump our bikes. I don't know if you guys remember that, but we all come running through there, because that's where you could get the best wheelies. So I'm not entirely sure how many of us broke our arms and stuff relative to that, but there are just a couple of things I wanted to not overly state, but it's clear that there's a lot of, this is a big monster. Okay? When you start looking at how many different little things can happen, and I have been, along with, with Tony and Rocky and Gary, we, we're always in front of you guys, because, not necessarily because we're against these guys, but it's so ambiguous as to what, what you can and can't do. And so I think it's really imperative that we try to keep it as simple as we possibly can. But at the same time, I don't think any of us don't want the safety of a good sidewalk where it needs to be. And, and so if we could just, you know, try to take a step back and recognize, you know, simplicity sometimes is the best way to do it. Maybe if it's a little more simple, there won't be so many. I will be back here on the 15th of November to talk to you guys, again, about, guess what? Sidewalks, okay? I've got 2,800 linear feet of street that I'm putting in right now, that I've already got a plat ready for. I've refiled it, because I've got 300 feet of sidewalk going absolutely to nowhere in that particular plat. And that's nothing against John, because that's what their job is, is to, to recognize that and say, hey, that's a future collector, all that kind of stuff. But it's, it's where we're getting so bogged down, you know? To give you one other quick example, I ordered a culvert in February for section 43, I ordered the culverts for my bridge. They got here yesterday. It's taking forever to get anything done. We're all carrying tons of interest, we're all carrying a lot of costs along with this that has nothing to do with all this. So it just doesn't make a lot of sense for us to get so bogged down in it. But for you guys, we're going to be coming back. We're going to keep coming back. And if the, the faster we can come up with a simple solution, and I really applaud my home builder, Bud's, that all think I'm just the weird hippie guy that never comes to the meeting, but they've done a phenomenal job of making this so simple. If you really read what they've said, I think it pretty much covers, just like John said, 90% of what we're talking about is covered. So I was just hopeful that we, at some point in time, can be rid of this potential issue. It's been going on for three, four, five, six, seven years. So, thank you.
All right, does anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Jones. Do you mind coming up? I'm sorry. The only way that the recording can hear you is if you're at that mic.
Tony Jones, again, just a simple question. What is the process for this panel going forward today?
I think it's to review and discuss what the staff is, is proposing. I don't think we necessarily have to make a decision today, and personally, I'm, I'm inclined to, to have more discussions, because this is a big issue, and there's a lot of detail. So I hope that answers your question. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Is this better? Okay. Hi, I'm Andy Orr, and I'm with Disability Connections, and I brought a statement as prepared by, from my coordinator, Anita Guy. And it was, basically, I'll just read it out, as she's written, because she couldn't be here today. She said, while sidewalks are a benefit to everyone, they are particularly important to those with disabilities who have limited travel choices. For example, older adults, persons with vision impairments, and individuals who do not have accessible means of transportation frequently rely on sidewalks to travel independently within their community for shopping, recreation, exercise, and access to informal supports in their neighborhood. With safety and accessibility as guiding principles, sidewalks provide greater access for those who use mobility aids, such as wheelchairs and walkers. Approximately 20% of all Americans have a disability, and that percentage is increasing. By the year 2030, 1 in 5 Americans will be over the age of 65, and will have some sort of mobility limitation. Navigating our neighborhoods and community without, without accessible sidewalks is not just challenging for many, but it is impossible. The outcome is isolation, loss of independence, loss of mobility, and, and issues with self-care and wellness. Without accessible sidewalks, we lack access to build connections with our neighbors and our systems of support, and our homes quickly become a prison. This is happening in our community right now. Disability Connections works with people with all disabilities. And every day, persons come to us that cannot leave their homes because there's no accessible pathway beyond their front porch. Something as simple as a sidewalk can change everything for individual, individuals with disabilities. It can mean independence, freedom, wellness, inclusion, and of course, safety. You may be thinking, these issues do not impact you, but disability population is the only minority population that anyone can join at any time. And the fact that most of us will, at some point in our life, become part of this group. On behalf of the present and future individuals with disabilities in our community, Disability Connections is in support of sidewalk ordinance at its highest level, and we would like to see sidewalks for everyone. Thank you.
As far as moving forward, what y'all are going to discuss, you know, it'd make it just so much easier if you just say, just no sidewalks in local, on local streets. And we can go from there with the connections, like she's talking about, to get to, get to the stores, get to the churches, and all that kind of thing. But there's so many issues here, front entry garages, and it just goes on and on. I'm not sure, I'm not sure local streets, is it, local neighbor, you know, the local streets, the 40-foot wide streets, I think you ought to give direction to staff. Let's exclude those for now, let's work on the other, see what we come up with, and go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cortez. All right, anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm going to close public comment, and open up discussion among my colleagues here. Anyone wish to start off?
So, so, an old adage to which just, you know, we, we do have a, it's not necessarily specifically a sidewalk ordinance, but we do have an ordinance that pertains to sidewalks if they are needed in certain areas. And an old adage is, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So that has always been in the back of my mind, even when we have plats that come up, anything else that are stamped for sidewalks, you know, why do we need it there, going all through the tangent of everything, why it's needed, if it's needed, where it's needed, on and on and on. Listening to everyone today, I've got something else that, you know, I want to add to that is, if we are to have a specific sidewalk ordinance in the future, we're not ready. So I don't think that the direction to give staff with changes are going to be too lengthy to go through. I think it needs to go possibly back to a work group and go over all this. I think that the HBA, who are building these sidewalks, and the city who's requiring them, need to be all on the same page, so that when something comes up in the future, we already know how it's going to work out, where it needs to be, all of that, without having to bring these forth, you know, and, and discuss it. Keep it simple stupid is, the kiss is what we need right now. And if we do a sidewalk ordinance of any kind, it also needs to have things included, such as sidewalk design standards, the road standards, the widths, everything else. There's a lot of things that are missing from this document, and there's also a lot of ownership that is going to the planning director, instead of the planning department, on specific changes that would be made, that would just be checked off on a box. So that needs to, there's a lot of things that need to be revisited. However, we say in all that, I'm happy with 1959.
You know, I think everyone agrees that the, you know, the biggest issue with the current ordinance is that there's far too much interpretation available, and, and just the way that it's written, you know, basically that it, you know, may be required, and there's really no clear explanation of when, or why, or what rationale that should go back to. And so I think, not only does that create a challenge for builders and developers, but it also creates a huge challenge for their staff. And, and us, definitely. And so I think, you know, what I would like to see, and I think what the purpose of this is, is that, you know, back to kind of Terry's point, is the more simple and concise that this can be, I think the better off we'll all be, rather than all these, you know, trap doors and, and semantics that, that, you know, as far as classifications of roads that currently require a certain pavement width, but may in the future not, you know, lots of other potential issues that could come up with the amendment to other ordinances that, that are tied in to, to this, you know, what we're talking about today. You know, personally, I would, I would prefer to see kind of the thought process, or the, or the language that we used in, in the draft, to be flipped, you know, specifically in language that we used in the draft to be flipped, you know, specifically in Section D, where we talked about where sidewalks aren't required, to maybe say where they are. You know, I agree, don't like, I don't think that we, I think everyone's pretty much in agreement to exclude local streets.
Let's take a quick poll. Does anyone else up here feel like we need sidewalks on local streets?
And, and I'll just, you know, say, in addition to that, that local street's being defined as it is in the current thoroughfare plan. So, you know, if we're going to discuss, or if the potential exists for narrowing streets in the future, I think that no question needs to be included in this discussion.
Yep.
And then, one more thing, I think, that I want to make sure we get included in here is that we can't just throw commercial development under the bus. I mean, I know that there's been a lot of representation from the HBA, which is great, I'm glad that they've, you know, made their voice heard, but, you know, I'm real concerned about the language in, that we talked about earlier in Section C, Paragraph Four, in the current draft, where, you know, potentially talking about internal circulation within a commercial development that's not even on, you know, a public street. So I definitely opposed to that. I think it's covered in good enough detail by ABA and other requirements that developer's going to have to follow. So, those are kind of my thoughts.
Anyone else?
I kind of agree with most of y'all, but yet disagree. Simple, it needs to be simple, but yet you have to have the boundaries, you have to have ifs and buts. There's no, if it were easy, if it were simple, we wouldn't be here. You know, they wouldn't need us, because it would all be spelled out in black and white. So, it's coming up with that happy medium of what we need in there, and what we don't need in there, and what spells it out best. I don't know that I have that answer right now.
I think it's come quite clear that we're not together on this, and what I see is an us and them. And I think that at this point, you know, kind of to the same language that, you know, everyone up here has said, we do need to take it back, get the right language, get the right words in here. I do agree with you on the local streets, you know, being excluded as far as direction, but I think that the working committee is the place to go. And the next meeting that we have, what I'd like to see is more of a consensus than what we had today, because it shows that apparently someone wasn't listening, I don't know which side it was, nor do I want to know, but I think at this point, it's time to slow the process down and make the right decisions for San Angelo.
The other thing I'm going to add, Terry's talked about keeping it simple, and I agree. I think all of us agree that if it's clear and concise and simple, it's, it's better to interpret. But I also think that we can't continue like we have. I'm tired of coming into planning commission meetings and having arguments over sidewalks and subdivisions, and whether it was required, and the staff may require it here, and it's not there. It's not clear for us, I know it's not clear for you guys, so we have to change it. I feel personally, we have to have a more clear sidewalk ordinance. I know it's going to take a lot of work, and I appreciate the time that all of you have taken to contribute, and it's going to take a little bit more, I think, for us to get to a resolution. But I do think that it's important, and I hope it's something that, when we look back in ten or fifteen years, or twenty years, it's, it's as good as it was when it was passed. I hope that that's the goal and objective of everyone in here.
Well, yeah, I'll just make a comment. I think, I guess, with respect to all the commissioners, I think we're much closer than maybe you all think. We've been working on this for two years, we've met with the Development Task Force five times, we've met with a smaller work group at least three times. And so I hear everything you're saying, and I think there are some wording things, but this draft, like I said, ninety percent we all agreed on, they've given you comments that, where we disagree. So I think we can go back and work on those, but I just don't want you all to walk away thinking this needs six months or a year's worth of work. That work mostly has been done. Yes, there are a few things we can tweak, and I think we've gotten some direction. I'd like to get a little more direction, like on the ETJ, a couple of those other issues, but if we got that direction, I think we could come back fairly quickly with something, because, again, most of this, most of this we all agree on.
Okay, let's talk about the ETJ. You talked about exempting sidewalks or sidewalk requirements from one-acre lots, I think that makes sense, that's rural development. That would be ranch and estate, potentially zoning.
Sorry if I could interrupt you. It sounds like you've already said we're exempting local streets, so
Yes.
That's going to be ninety percent of it. Then really, the only question is, on those major streets, developments on major streets, where we still want sidewalks.
So arterials, I think the, the HBA and all the developers in this room have said sidewalks make sense. For major collectors, it seems to be consensus that it makes sense. So is there a dispute or debate over minor collectors? For me personally, you know, I live in Santa Rita, so that's my, that's my reference point, that's my compass. And Avenue J and Avenue L are dangerous streets to walk down. I've done it, I've done it with my dogs and my kids, and I don't like it. I have to stand on the sidewalk when a car's coming down, because I've, there have been cars that, that are just going too fast through that neighborhood. If there was a sidewalk on one of those streets, I would feel safer. Whether it's, whether the statistics bear out that it's safer or not, is a whole nother discussion. I would feel safer if there was a sidewalk that I could walk down on Avenue J or Avenue L, and I view those as minor collector streets. So, that's, that's, that's kind of where I stand on this. I don't think we need sidewalks in front of all the houses. I understand the cost issue, I understand the liability issue, the road widths are fine, but minor, minor collectors, I think is maybe my only personal sticking point from, where I might vary from the, from the HBA on this. How do you guys feel?
I see your point, and it also goes back to some of that, that it's case-by-case basis as well. But I kind of agree with you, you know, those streets where people are driving faster.
Well, it's, it's a, those minor collectors, as John has indicated, are the streets that, that the local residents are using to get in and out of the neighborhood. So there is, I think, a considerable amount more traffic on those roads than there might be on a, on a standard local road. But I think going back to the, the points that some of the developers have made, we might need to name streets and be specific, and not just say, minor collectors, so that there's a clear understanding of which roads might need sidewalks.
I think to me, the simplification would be, would be a road width rather than a name.
Okay.
I think, you know, using Avenue J and Avenue L, because those are very old streets, and there is one house that you walk down that does have a sidewalk that you can jump on, but other than that, there's not any. So, you know, we're kind of comparing apples and oranges now, because those are not going to be required to put in sidewalks.
No, they're not. We're not talking about
We're not going to be able to widen those streets in any form or fashion.
You're right.
So I think to my, back to my point of road width, when those streets were put in, the, you don't have to run away, Russell, I'll be quick. I think the minimum road width, or pavement width, sorry for a minor collector, in assuming that Avenue J is, and I'm not sure that it is, but
It's not.
It's, was forty feet, now it's fifty. So you've got another ten feet, you know, and a new development's going to be required for a minor, minor collector, anyway.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gully.
Russell Gully, and we may not be in opposition to them on minor streets, once we review and see what the new street width standards are. They may absolutely, you know, we narrow them down, and sure, we may be fully fine with that, but if we're building a fifty-foot street, you know, are sidewalks really, truly necessary? So bring it all together, and, and, yeah, I think we're down to that minor collector is where the line is, and I think it depends on the width of that minor collector.
Okay.
I guess I'm just a little concerned, John, that, you know, you mentioned about the street width proposal coming before us. I feel like street width and sidewalks go hand in hand, and why they weren't addressed at the same time, I guess I'm a little puzzled.
Well, I'll answer that, yeah. We, we did actually bring them to the same time to the Development Task Force, and actually today is, is kind of the first time I've heard from them any concern about those street widths. It's been to that group two or three times. So we, that ordinance is actually drafted and ready to go. I guess my concern with today is, is throwing a whole discussion of street widths on top of all this sidewalk stuff. It might have been overwhelming, I think, to discuss. So what I hoped to get today, which I think we've gotten, is some clarification and direction from you all. So I think the next time we bring a draft of this back, we can definitely bring that street width ordinance, because again, like I said, it's already written, it's been reviewed both internally, and it's been to the Development Task Force, so.
And the sidewalk design specifications?
We can, we can bring those as well.
That needs to be, that needs to be attached or within this document.
Incorporated into the document. Yes, sir, Mr. Temple.
On the comment of the ETJ, I'd just like to make, notice that if somebody goes back and looks at it over the five or six years, that they'll notice the ETJ has become pretty much a dead zone, and everybody's moved outside of the ETJ. And so all the subdivisions are pretty much going three, five, now six miles out, so they don't have to worry about the city or the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky.
I think that our, our request or need from this panel, leaving here today, would be very clear direction for John, that no sidewalks will be required in a new subdivision unless they meet certain criteria.
Okay.
We're in agreement where they need to be. Our little, simple paragraph and a half ordinance that we drew up two months ago states those. John has added some. We all agree where sidewalks need to be, but there's no reason, if I take a plat in there next month for twenty new lots, that he should either be able or want to stamp a sidewalk requirement on there, because that just throws me in here. If none of, none of those twenty lots make the criteria that we agree upon, there's no reason I should have to come to you and ask for permission to go against what John wants. So if you have clear direction for John, that sidewalks will not be required in new residential subdivisions, or internally on commercial, then I think we can leave here today in good faith and say possibly we can be back here in three weeks and have something that we agree on.
So Tony, that two, could we get that back up, please?
Which, which one?
The one that he's referring to.
The old ordinance.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The old Jones-written ordinance there.
And we didn't show all, there were three pages of this, so I, I mean.
There are three pages, it is a little longer than I
Three pages, but the first page, you're saying, is what you all agreed on.
The first page says sidewalks will be required under the following circumstances, and I'm sure John has one or two or three that he wants to add to that, and that's fine, I've seen it in his draft. And then it addresses the street widths. But again, a minor collector, what he calls a minor collector could be a forty-foot street that we think people are going to drive down.
Right.
You know, it's not established that it's going to be a collector, it's not designed to be a collector, so therefore, it should not be required to have a sidewalk. It should not be overdesigned.
Thank you. How do we define minor collectors?
Again, it's, it's defined by the thoroughfare plan, but it's, it's basically as
But it's adjusted as the plaits are coming in, right?
As new subdivisions are designed, they have to accommodate the thoroughfare plan. So if we show a minor collector through that, they should be designing the subdivision to include a minor collector through their subdivision. Typically, that means they will design it, because that's the street that's going to be the through street that connects to, you know, adjacent subdivisions, then it's typically, that means it's designed in a way that it will funnel, it'll be the street that funnels traffic into those adjacent areas.
Do we need to provide direction to you guys? Are you clear on kind of what our thoughts are?
I think so, I think
Do we need to discuss minor collectors anymore? I think we've got a consensus on local streets, among us here, that it makes sense to put sidewalks on all the local streets.
Yeah, so on this question, in new neighborhoods, it sounds pretty clear the answer on local streets is no. It sounds like there is still some discussion on minor collectors, so you can either do that today, or when we bring back an ordinance, that'll be a point of discussion, whether or not to include minor collectors. I think I heard an answer on the ETJ was on major streets, major collectors and arterials, they'd still be required, but nothing else. And so I think that answers that first question there.
What would you say are major ETJ streets?
Mostly the existing streets, so they'd be the, the county roads that are in the
Example, please.
Gosh, that's a good question. I'll have to pull up a map. What was that?
Twin Mountain Drive.
Twin Mountain, yeah, that'd be a good example that, of course, that's mostly in the city limits now.
That's in city limits.
Right. Yeah, so it continues now.
Yeah.
We suspect that as that area develops, they'll annex in, but if that area were to continue to develop under ETJ standards, that's an example that, as Twin Mountain continues all the way over to sixty-seven, even if parts of that are developed in the ETJ, should they put sidewalks, like the in-city street portion, or because they're in the ETJ, should they be exempt?
You guys want to discuss minor collectors? Anyone have questions about minor collectors? Or is it just as simple whether or not you would like sidewalks on minor collectors? I guess we could do that with a show of hands?
I think, yeah, that's the direction we need.
So.
And I think we need some examples of minor collector streets on your, you had some on your
So, Charles, we read off, at least what the width is, so everybody knows, and then if you can see those.
Yes, that's, I think that's a great idea. So the minimum right-of-way width for a minor collector, this is the San Angelo Comprehensive Plan, is sixty feet, and the minimum pavement width is fifty feet. This is effective August twenty-first, two thousand and one. The minimum pavement width for minor collectors was increased from forty to fifty feet. That's according to the City of San Angelo.
And that's without a sidewalk?
Right. And that's
And under our proposed standard, and like I said, the ordinance has already been drafted and reviewed, that would go back down to forty-feet width, but with the addition of a sidewalk.
Okay. Open it up for public comment. We have a gentleman joining us here, Mr. Eustace.
Questionable. If we're kind of just trying to synopsize how we feel and the direction we're going to take, I just wanted to clarify the way I feel. I would like to make sure that sidewalk requirements on commercial developments should always be deferred to the permitting process.
Yes.
And because it says may, and again, that's, and even if I take a big lot and I'm going to cut it in two, and one's getting built on and one's not, they're still deferred to the building permitting process.
Yep.
And then I want to make sure that, hopefully, y'all agree, that interior sidewalks should be removed from this and shifted to the permitting stage. We don't need to be showing where sidewalks are going to go from one building to the parking lot. And then you have a question of, is the parking lot itself a means of access to get to the building?
Right.
So this, that should be out.
And I agree with, Russell alluded to this, if there's a requirement for sidewalks at a boundary for the, for the site, TASS and ADA have very strict guidelines. You have to get pedestrian access from that curb to the, to the improvements within the site. have to get pedestrian access from that curb to the, to the improvements within the site and to the ADA parking spaces. I, I personally feel like that's, those guidelines are adequate for sidewalks within commercial development. You guys agree?
There's no, yes. There's no commercial builder that doesn't want to make sure somebody can get from their car to their front door.
Yeah. It's probably in the best interest of their development to do that.
Rocky Temple, back again. I do have a version, a draft from July 30th of 2018 that talked about right-of-ways, widths and paving widths. And then I had another one from a Development Task Force meeting on August 22nd of 2018, which talked about decrease and increase. And then I have a proposed sidewalk design standard from June 24th of 2021. But nowhere do I have a final draft that's ready to go to council for street widths.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to close public comment again. So obviously road widths are part of this discussion and I think, I think it does make sense. I'm assuming everyone else up here agrees. And if we're talking about minor collectors and maybe reducing the width of the road and adding a sidewalk, I certainly think that makes sense. So would, if we reduce the width of the minor collector roads, does it make sense to add sidewalks to those roads? Or do we, do we want to keep a 50-foot road with no sidewalks for minor collectors?
Should you not have the option?
I think the concern with that is, just like roads, sidewalks provide connectivity. So if, if one developer builds sidewalks, the next one doesn't, not only do you have a road widening from 40 to 50, but you have sidewalks that end. So our recommendation either require them or don't, but they're only.
Got to be.
Largely beneficial if they're interconnected.
Committee work.
Okay.
This needs to go back and you need to look at it some more, come back with something else for us. I think we're doing committee work right now. That needs to be done. We can't, we can't answer the questions that we need to correctly because we don't have all that information. So I am going to make a motion to send this back to planning and I hope that they get a, use the task force or whomever to help them get this together so that everybody comes together when they have it completed and we can agree on all this and move it forward along with the sidewalk specifications and with the streets.
I'll, I'm going to give Terry a, I'll give the, the second on that, but you know, I think that everybody always sighs up here when I put my pen down. You just never know what you're going to get. You know, I think that one, the one thing that, well, I tell you, the only thing that's on my mind right now, and, and usually I don't bring up costs because we've been up here, some of us have been up here a long time. When you go through the training, one of the one things that they talk about is we're not up here to talk about how much something costs. And I've said that 100 times up here.
Cost is not a hardship, I believe is.
True.
What's been said to us. Yeah.
And, and look, and I, and I've believed that for the last five years or six. I don't even know how long I've been up here, but six, I think. But be that as it may. One of the gentlemen, and I'm sorry, we've had a lot of people speak. I can't remember who said it a while ago, a couple of the ways that I voted. I was for sidewalks on one deal and I wasn't for, and, and yeah, you're 100% right. But when I voted for some of those sidewalks, I think it was in, somebody said it was 2019. And the world was completely different in 2019 than it is today. Costs were different in 2019 than they are today. And, and I'll tell you, that's why I bring up, we're not supposed to talk about costs because it's literally the only thing that's on my mind right now. When I think about what it could cost to, and I know nothing about building homes or pouring concrete. I do know what steel costs for rebar because we do buy steel. And that's insane right now. But I will say that everything is expensive right now. We are, we are going through some things in this country, and I'm not trying not to get political, but we're going through some things in this country that are going to affect every single person in that room that are trying to build homes, that are trying to build business, and folks up here that are trying to buy homes, and the folks out there that we represent that are buying homes and trying to open businesses. Everything we do up here from now on is going to affect it. And so I'm going to tell you that the one thing that's going to be on my mind is what everything is going to cost. And whether I get fired up here from my free job today for saying that, that's fine. Okay? But I'm telling you, cost is going to be number one on my mind because we've got a long road ahead of us. We're only in 2021. We're almost at 22, but it's going to be a very long few years for most of us. Okay? So cost is going to be on my mind for every decision that I'm making up here moving forward, however long I'm up here. And that's the only thing that I can say to the citizens is I'm going to be considering cost moving forward because I've never seen anything like this before. And I'm afraid for folks that are trying to buy homes and build homes, who knows what interest rates are going to be doing? We all know you can't even, if you can find material, what it costs. Things that used to be on the shelves for our fleet are taking weeks to arrive when there used to be dozens of particular parts at the shelves at places that fix trucks and things like that are, are taking weeks to arrive. One of you alluded to that a while ago. So cost is going to be top of mind for me, I'm telling you right now.
All right. We need to take a vote on the direction or are we good?
I think we're good. There was a motion though, so we probably could take a vote.
A motion and a second.
Okay, so we'll hear the motion.
Can we hear the motion again? I'm sorry.
The motion was to send it back.
Got, got.
And that we are, yeah, back to staff and hopefully they will have a, an ad hoc, for lack of a better word, committee or somebody to help them and to include when it comes back, the road information that we need and the sidewalk specifications that we need. But it's not ready for, I don't, it's not ready for us to vote on. And we have a second for Mr. Spano.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seven zero. All right. Director's report.
Don't have anything to add today.
All right.
Just a reminder of the next meeting is in two weeks.
Yes. Future meeting agenda and announcements, the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled being 9:00 AM, Monday, November 15th. An adjournment. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Seven zero, it's 11:18.